Right here, uh we stand and say the pledge with us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, considered republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, good evening.
I'll go ahead and start with our spotlight school this evening.
Alright, um thank you for allowing us to to be tonight and very excited to showcase all the hard work that staff and students have done this year at Greenfield Intermediate. And what we're gonna be presenting to you tonight is specifically writing instruction at G I S and how that's changed a little bit this year. At the end of last year over the summer, we we had some conversations about data, which led us to the conversations about I learn, specifically just about how the test is formatted and we we had the discussion that students not only have to complete a writing prompt, they also have to have a response to reading where they have to read a paragraph and then respond to that with evidence. In math class, they have to solve a math problem and then respond to that with writing, same thing for science and social studies using evidence of their learning. So it made sense to us that we might wanna think about transitioning some instruction in those classrooms that is tied to writing. So in order to make that transition, that change in our mindset, moving from teaching the writing process tied to a genre and isolation in E L A classes, we wanted to also include writing as a evidence of student learning. So we wanted to take a cross-curricular approach. It made sense to us that if students are going to be assessed using writing in all content areas, then writing should take place in all content areas. Uh more deliberate writing, let me say that, should take place in more in all content areas. So we decided to start small and just look at sentences and focus on sentence structure, types and functions, and then just how to craft quality sentences. The second semester, we're currently working on how to take those quality sentences and develop quality paragraphs. Um in order to make this mindset shift, this change, um we wanted to get teachers talking about writing instruction. So we started out with the idea that hey, every P L C will spend the first five minutes allowing teachers to talk about writing um in their grade levels. That lasts about two weeks and teachers were asking to talk to other math teachers and science teachers. So we put in a rotation to allow teachers to have more in-depth conversations about what writing looks like in everybody's classrooms. Aside from that, the related arts teachers were listening to these conversations and they wanted to join in on the fun. So they decided to implement writing in their classrooms. So they wanted to implement something they called Writing Wednesdays. And the students were coming in and participating in activities that not only allowed students to find the joy in writing, but also writing to support instruction in their classrooms. This also led to the need for more structure. So one of the things that we looked at was the writing revolution and how it supports writing instruction across curricular. And I'll let Mrs. Hillman talk to you more about that. She led a book study with the staff on the writing revolution.
Hi, um kind of what Mr. Curtis has already said, last spring, we realized that our students needed some more um structure with their writing. So we looked at some different books that we wanted to use for writing, um and the writing revolution seemed like it would be a good fit. With the book study, teachers participated in a monthly book study session where they practiced the strategies with their colleagues and then they took those back to their classrooms and implemented those. I think the the best part was bringing those conversations back to P L Cs, um talking to other teachers to learn what worked in their classroom, things that were going well. Um and they're still sharing during our P L Cs, um as Mr. Curtis mentioned, we're on to going on to paragraphs now. We moved from sentences to single paragraphs and then we used outlining to develop those multiple paragraphs. The program also explicitly teaches writing strategies and it moves from planning, so being very purposeful with the planning, then moving on to revising and editing. The incorporation of writing in all content areas can be seen throughout our building and I feel like our students are feeling successful with that.
So before I turn loose to experience what the students have been working on, I wanna share kind of a story. Um and I shared this with Dr. Olin about a week ago. The reason why I know this was working is I went to go pick up my children at an after-school daycare and I saw two of our students sitting in the back and they were kinda over there whispering to each other, so I'll have a good check on this. So I went back there to talk to the two guys and they were setting up an an argument, they were trying to write to talk their parents into letting one another spend the night at each other's houses during a school night. And they were setting it up the same way that we teach the students to use single paragraph outline, so I was like, hey, this is working. Like they're actually doing this, this is awesome. So uh so I'm really excited to for you to see what the students have have planned for you tonight. So uh and roughly for in about fi- for about five minutes, I I invite the students to come and find a board member and just show you one of the activities that they they've done during our writing time at G I S. So students, if you would find a board member to come and share that with you.
He looks so excited. He like turned and like, right. He like, they're mine.
I think we gotta go to the board.
Shall we?
Our eighth grade math, but we had sixth graders.
So you picture you need to choose.
Does that end Greenfield Intermediate, is that the?
So why don't you go to the board?
Anyways, um how did I support the board?
For the month, December, we.
Um my school is the most terrific school I could ever.
Okay.
And we have all of our students.
Oh, no.
Okay, so we picked and it's. It's really good.
Stating what it's already that we stated.
Does it work?
Oh, these are permanent.
I come to Mr. Ronson. We turn over and there's.
We've done it before.
Here, probably one more marker.
One more.
It's the last one. There you go.
Yeah, it's true enough.
Try to try to.
So we got twelve-year time.
Science teachers completely jump forward. I like to use circles in the support.
This is taking.
Yeah, yes.
Uh so this is in your mind, that's.
There you go. What's this for?
So since you're writing an outline.
It's just. What's the mother of a left hander?
You might trip it out when you're not gonna submit.
She got more explanation. She can't. Isn't it just saying it in a different way? Except she's saying my school is a school that you could say.
My school is definitely in the.
Then is that still considered a positive or is that? So they've ever since. So like reasons or questions you need to change. So long we.
Wrap it up about the next twenty to thirty seconds.
She's like, she's telling it. Yeah, he knows.
Starting to prepare. I think it catches help to you. Be more creative and.
Yeah, this.
I mean, why do we? Yeah.
It's gone. The job is without.
So we're good on traits. Too fast. Oh, yeah. It's okay.
I thought.
No, I'm just working on. So I have the entire packet in Google Drive, so I'll just kinda. Work my way through it. Greg thinks it's an Apple problem.
I'm gonna go with user error. Three C X.
It's highly possible.
We had to.
So thank you again for for allowing us to come in and help students showcase their their developing talents with writing. Any questions about the?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Move right along, will we um any public comments this evening?
No one.
We'll move on to matters of the board, uh routine matters. Can I get a motion to approve the regular meeting of January eighth and the executive session of January eighth, twenty twenty four?
I move that we approve the minutes from both the general meeting and the executive session on January eighth, twenty twenty four.
I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposing. Uh can I get a of claims, Mr. Day?
Uh yes, including your packet are regular claims, payroll claims and a construction claim for the auditorium project. I'm happy to answer any questions you have, otherwise I ask the board approve the claim docket as presented.
And any questions or comments, if not, can I get a motion to approve the claim dockets as presented?
Make a motion to approve the claims document as presented.
Any second, I'll favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposing. Onto old and unfinished business, let's go to financial matters.
Uh yes, um in your packet this month is a wrap-up of twenty twenty three and then January twenty twenty four with the Education Operations Fund. It's also has the first projection for both funds for the coming year. We have received our budget from the state and our budget order has been issued. With the projections that we have in front of us and the budget order, I'd like to note that while we're approved to spend a little bit over thirty-two and a half million dollars in education fund, just a tick over fourteen million dollars in operations fund, we will not be spending that much, as you can see in the projection. In the projections I have provided to you, um it does look that way that we have thirty-four million in projection or expenditures, but that transfer between education operations technically does not fall into that budget order. So it will be a little bit lower than what's in the projection. I also included the budget comparison since the conversion to the Education Operations Fund. If you remember, we used to have a general fund and a capital project, so the transportation fund. And it just kinda shows our appropriations, our tax rates, our tax levies and our assessed value over time. Happy to answer any questions that you have about this. I would note that A D M got was was finalized this this morning. We're waiting to see the results of that and then obviously the fall A D M will affect the last half projections for education fund and we'll update it as that number becomes more real. If you have no questions, there's no action required on this item.
Yeah, we'll move on to um construction.
You did the information there about the math adoption process. Remember, we went through that whole process, uh looking through curriculum last year, bringing teachers in, doing some alignment with uh with standards. We did not choose to formally adopt because the state was gonna come out with a a formalized list. We didn't wanna adopt something that may not approve be on that approved list, uh particularly as the uh we've had the the concerns related to textbook fees that the state is paying us for. It's about a hundred and fifty dollars per student.
Just tick under a hundred fifty dollars per student.
So we wanna make sure that whatever we do adopt fits that list. We still do not have that official list, but we're just kinda reminding you of that that work that we we have done there. And you wanna add to that, Mr. Murray?
The list should be about any day now, so as soon as that happens, then we'll have something for next.
It's a pretty long process we go through and it's been kinda rough for us to to wait and obviously we're chomping at the bit to to formalize that. We'll wanna do some professional development over the summer to ensure that that our teachers are familiar with the new tech. So more to come on that.
Alright, thanks. Well, let's keep with you on construction project update.
I know you'd probably go to the pictures first, that's what I would do. We've come a long way with the the auditorium project, as I hope you see from those pictures that are in there. Everything from the the underground H V A C that we'll have there. Just a reminder that we chose to put it in the ground instead of putting that up in the thirty-five feet in the air because it would be really noisy to force that air down. But it has created some complications in terms of getting that space done. They made great progress on that here in the last couple of weeks. Gonna move on to the next picture, Greg. As you can see, they're starting to actually pour the the concrete in the balcony and those waterfall stairs. The process they do, I'm not sure I fully understand why they they bounce like that, but that gives you an idea of the progress that had been made when those pictures were taken last Friday. Next. This would be the the piece on the far left-hand side where they have all the underground stuff done. They're prepping that ground for the slab and I think that's when it's really gonna take shape for you, when you see all that slab being poured, not only on that first level, but in the balcony. Just a a view from the back of that balcony, something that I'm pretty proud of, the design that that Mark Beebe and his team came up with. Even if you're in the back of that balcony, you're gonna feel fairly close to to that stage. So with fourteen hundred people in there, it's still gonna feel like you're you're right there with it. And that would be from the stage looking up, kinda giving that that same sense. And then that last picture there, you can even see the catwalks. I I mentioned, you actually see all three of the catwalks there, the one that goes probably right over the front of the stage, one that's midway back and then one that's all the way in the back. That is only, it goes through the western half of that, but there are three catwalks that that steel is in place there. So really making a lot of progress. We needed that structural steel to be done so we could really wrap up that last piece of the the excavation to put the the H V A C in into the ground. Once that's that's done, you you'll see us really button up that area with those last few panels that should be coming here in the next.
Late March.
Yeah. Driving from the north, you still see that gap on the back that'll close up here pretty soon. Any questions about the auditorium, Mr. Day and I are certainly happy to entertain those.
Not at the moment. Would you like to get with yet and go through it again?
Yeah, yeah, as as always, anytime. If we wanna go through as a as a larger group, they asked that we do it after four P M. But as you're just individuals, I can meet you just at any time.
Right.
So just let me know.
Yeah, we can even get you in without walking through the mud if there's one from the interior part, I think.
But you really lose part of the experience.
Yeah.
Before we leave that uh the construction report in general, obviously very excited about the auditorium as I am every month, but also listed on there the general obligation bond that we went ahead and received those proceeds for late twenty twenty-three. Just a reminder, some of those projects we've been working on, happy to report that the L E D project, the high school, has really brightened things up. It's accomplished two things, it's brighter and it certainly will save us some some of our energy costs. The surveillance cameras in a couple of our schools as well as this building, well underway of upgrading those cameras. And then if you turn over to that that next page, a couple of those things that are coming up here early in twenty twenty-four. One that I wanna definitely put on on your radar here, we've talked about making some upgrades to that soccer field. You know, we've done a little bit of legwork just getting some pricing on that, but we'd really like to to formalize that, Mr. Day.
So we've been working on on gathering some information and doing our research on that and we've kind of narrowed the field down to a group of contractors that we think we are interested in and would like to get more formalized bids from them. So I I asked for the board's permission to move forward with a more formalized uh request for proposal project with a group of qualified bidders and leverage these the cooperative purchasing contracts as we have in the past for projects like this.
You have a motion or comments or questions, I'm not gonna get a motion to let them go forward to formalize this search for formalized bids.
I'll move that we authorize approaching some pre-qualified bidders for uh the more formal pricing option.
I'll say the same.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposing.
Good, we'll get on that and obviously we'll have more information for you next month.
Thanks, did you have a question?
Uh I I was gonna take us back to the instruction program report when we're done with the construction. Good. So we.
So we do that.
Yeah, was there a, Dr. Olin, was there an update on a social studies curriculum piece as well? A social studies materials adoption?
Yeah, I talked about the the math piece specifically there. Or did we leave that office?
It was it was on the second.
Second page.
It's the second page.
Oh, that's why I'm not seeing.
It's the third material.
Second page. Where is it? Yes, um as we've listed there, um kinda narrowed that process down to a few. We'll make those available for for people to review those. Would like to have a recommendation to the board for next month.
And these can be viewed in the office or?
Yeah, they'll they'll be available, yeah.
Have those available in January for about a month.
Okay.
We did have a few people that took us up on that a year ago. That's what they're there for.
I'm surprised.
Any other questions?
Sorry about that, I forgot the second page, so.
Right, no, that's alright. Alright, onto the calendar, second reading, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
And I did share this with you last month, uh wrote that initial draft of that. We shared that um with our families, we collected some comments on that. We actually received only fifteen formal comments on that. We put those in there for you, no big surprises on that. You have a few people that were very much in favor of it. Most of our community is has become accustomed to the balanced calendar that we have with the the two-week seasonal breaks. We had a couple of comments in there of of not wanting to start school in in July, uh wanting to be done before Memorial Day. We missed those by just a couple of days on both ends to achieve that that balance. Really, after looking at all the the feedback and even talking with our our C T A officers about that, I would recommend approval of the draft twenty-five, twenty-six calendar.
No comments or questions, can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six square calendar as presented?
I move that we approve the twenty-five, twenty-six square calendar as presented.
Second.
Second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposing. Onto new business, business information, Mr. Day.
Uh yes, I'm sorry, not having the app is moving a little bit slow. Uh we have two grants and donations this month. The first, Harris Elementary received four thousand three hundred sixty-five dollars from United Way at Central Indiana for student literacy and literacy enrichment. And Greenfield Central stu- uh Greenfield Central Junior High received five thousand dollars from an anonymous donor for students in the band department. I ask that the board approve these grants and donations as presented. The amount of these opportunities is nine thousand three hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Can I get a motion to approve the grants and donations as presented?
I move that we approve the grants and donations as presented.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
All favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposing. Out-of-state field trips, Miss, Dr. Olin.
This really grew and I will apologize that a couple of these are coming up fairly quickly. Uh one of them, we really just could not fully anticipate. The first one, you have a request for the show choir to go to Nashville, Tennessee, March eighth through tenth. It would be with uh Mr. Grizzard. We also have a second one there from Coach Holden requesting permission to travel to Evansville on February fifteenth and sixteenth for that state wrestling tournament. Do we have?
Two.
Two, obviously, uh that typically takes place in Indianapolis due to the All-Star game, they had to relocate that. That's why it's in Evansville. Could have some really early matches that take place with a three-hour trip, it makes the most sense to go down early. I would certainly support that. Uh and then the last one there, we have Mr. Wyland requesting to take a group of art students to Chicago to the Lincoln Park Zoo and Art Institute. These groups have all gone overnight field trips or out-of-state field trips before. These groups have all gone overnight field trips or out of state field trips before. I know the the expectations we have, it would incur no additional cost to the corporation, so I would recommend approval of each of them.
Okay, get a motion to approve the overnight out of state trips as presented.
Make a motion to present and accept these out of state field trips as presented.
Second. All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you.
I mean, the Farm Machinery Show is a great Valentine's date, so.
Spoken from experience.
As someone who works in the ag industry, I appreciate that idea from.
All right, on to uh, contract recommendations and resignation leaves and retirements.
Okay, list of certified recommendations. Kevin Adams, Tiffany Anderson, Gina Russell, Emmeline Wagner, certified retirement, Beth Forthover, certified resignation. Avi Apataka, Casey Berkshire, and Elisa Stanfield. ECA recommendations Kirk Davenport, Emory Dickerson, Matt Dickerson, Allison Gray, Brianna Hurst, Josh Imel, Nick Lacy, Josh McIntyre, Amanda Shinowski, Jeremy Spencer, Chris Tatum, and Tyler Wilson. In the last category there, ECA resignations from Jay Khan and Kyle Smitherman. Recommendations that the board approved personnel report as presented provide us with the opportunity to hire as needed for the duration of the twenty three twenty four school year as well as staff for the for next school year. And of course, we're gonna bring those to you at the next regular scheduled board meeting.
Okay, get a motion to approve the personnel report as presented.
Move that we approve the personnel report as presented and authorize hiring in the year.
I'll second.
All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. All right, Dr. Olin, I think we got.
Yeah, I have one other item. You have a separation agreement in front of you. You've got an opportunity to review that, ask questions. I would recommend that the board approve that separation agreement as written. I believe Mr. Strahl has had an opportunity to review that.
Any questions or comment on it? Can I get a motion to approve the separation agreement as presented?
Make a motion to approve the separation agreement as presented.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same.
Okay, we'll move forward with that. Thank you. We do have a few introductions this week. Mr. Carey, go ahead.
We are pleased to announce Kevin Adams. Kevin's gonna be our German teacher next year. We are stealing him from Eastern Hancock. We're very excited to have him. Kevin was involved with our volleyball program years ago, so he's very not new, I guess, familiar would be great, we're happy to have him and we look forward to increasing some of our offerings next year, more language.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yep.
All right. All right, we'll move right along to report dates. Radio school board meeting Monday, March the eleventh. Here, Presidents' Day, February nineteenth, no school, e-learning, April the eighth, um, Eclipse Day. Future agenda, future agenda, Hancock County Library, annual report. If we don't have any other discussions, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So move.
That second?
Second.
All in favor of say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.